I'd like to call to order the City of Columbus 6/26/19 City Council Meeting at 7:05 PM. All members are present. Please stand and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda with addition of number five.
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Down to letter C. This will be a presentation of the JP Commerce MIF enclosures and there is information on pages four to six in your packets. Julie, do you want to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Julie Eddington. I'm from the firm of Kennedy and Graven, and we represent the city as their bond counsel and their public finance development counsel. I was here two weeks ago and we talked a little bit about the MIF loan program through DED and the documents that are related to the MIF loan that JP E-Commerce is getting from the state. And just as a summary of those documents, there is a loan agreement. The loan is about $940,000. There is a promissory note that the developer signs and gives to the city as a promise to repay the loan. There's a security agreement related to the equipment that will be purchased with the loan proceeds. And together, those documents make up the agreements that need to be signed either by the developer or by the city. It will also be filing, UCC filings at the Secretary of State to perfect the city's interest in the equipment. The last time I was here, you had several questions about whether or not the city would be liable with respect to any portion of the loan if the developer defaulted or somehow was not able to make the payments back to the state. I have email, I have had email communications with Bob Isaacson, who's the executive director of DED, and the loan officer Lisa Darjes, who works for Bob Isaacson. And their first communication to me indicated that, no, they would not require the city to repay the loan if there was a default. And then today, I got additional information from them and specific answers about the questions that we talked about two weeks ago. And that's a memo. I'm not, did everyone get a memo?
In the additions, yes.
Okay. So in the second page of the memo, and the reason it came out today was because I just got the last email from Lisa this morning. And so, one of the questions that was asked was whether DED would ever demand payment from a municipal entity if a MIF loan went sideways, that there was a default, and they said no. And the next question was, would there, what are the steps that they would take whether or not, if there was a default? And they said that DED would work with the city to determine what steps needed to be completed per the loan agreement and assist in notifying the business of the defaults. So that's sort of the process we talked about last time, where if DED finds that there's a default, they go to the city and they explain what's going on, and then there's usually a conference call or a meeting with the city, the state, and the developer to work out a new payment plan and how that's gonna happen. They do not require the city to pay any of the loan back. The one thing they do require the city to do is to cooperate with helping the state get repaid by demanding payment under the promissory note or taking action under the security agreement to repossess potentially the equipment. And that's all in cooperation, city and state working together on that. And the last question was whether or not they would pursue any other remedies besides what's in the documents, and the answer to that was no. So it's our firm's opinion, and we've done lots of these, and we've seen some defaults from developers who have not made a go of it. And a city's never been asked to repay a MIF loan. The several times I've been involved with things that went badly were very large, large industrial developments that went, you know, the economy went bad and then they couldn't, they couldn't make a go of it. And those, the two examples that I can think of at the moment, there were, they had to repay because they didn't create the number of jobs that they needed to create. And those repayment plans that were worked out by DED and they paid that back to the state over time, and the city did not. The city did have to pay some attorney's fees with respect to the phone calls that we did have for the default, but they did not have to pay any of the loan or the interest to the state.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to add or any questions for Julie? Elizabeth, anything from you?
I have no further questions for Julie. I understand that there is a resolution that covers all of the different documents.
The number would be 1916.
Motion to approve Resolution 1916, approving the loan of the Minnesota Investment Fund grant to JP E-Commerce and execution of related documents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then the motion, the resolution passes. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. The next item on our agenda will be the Planning Commission report. Is there anyone here to represent the Planning Commission?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Barb Mawick, and we had quite a full schedule on the Planning Commission of June 19th. We had two public hearings. The first one was for the ACES Hotel for two signage variances, and John Zeibert was here from Trinity Business Consulting. ACES is a five-story hotel that needs two roof signs to attract traffic coming from all directions on 35, or they, it becomes a missed opportunity. The signs on the south and north roof will allow for that required visibility. The signs cannot be installed on the walls because the building has windows running across all of the walls, and it would obstruct their view. He explained that roof truss systems will be used to support the signs through wind loads. The wall signing on the existing casino building will be replaced by a new sign that extends above the portico. It will extend 69 inches above the surface of the wall, so it will be 45 inches, inches over the standard definition of a wall sign. The extension will allow better visibility from Zurich and from the lot where trees are obstructing its view. The signage will be on new LED lighting system, so the lighting will be continuous because of a transformer system. The public hearing was open to the public, and there were no comments. Elizabeth explained the new process for variances. The information provided about the sign variances by Elizabeth, Ben, and the staff was excellent and very helpful to the commission to decide recommendations for the council. Two variances for ACES were recommended for approval to move forward to the council, one for the two roof signs and one for the portico sign. The second public hearing was for the Thernbeck Preserve Phases Two and Three. Tom Carlisle and Jason Rudd presented an application to amend the CUP for PUD in conjunction with a preliminary plat for Phases Two and Three to add 28 lots to Phase Two and 12 lots to Phase Three. Jason Rudd from EGR, EG Rudd and Sons is a professional land surveyor, and he explained the lot density with a five-acre maximum and a 2.5-acre minimum according to the flexible dimension standards for rural residential PUDs. He also touched on the use of pedometers to monitor the groundwater and establish the low water elevations for the development. The city code requires a four-foot separation from groundwater to low floor. Their company uses a five-foot standard. The Chair, Ron Hanagraf, excuse me, asked for public comment. One resident spoke. He was concerned about high groundwater levels on his property south of the development and feels that an additional 40 lots will exacerbate the problems neighbors have experienced with standing water on their property. His property had standing water that came within a few feet of his pole barn, and he feels the addition of more impervious house pads can only mean more runoff. Mr. Rudd said his company wasn't involved in the stormwater plans. There will be 14 stormwater ponds proposed within the plat. The norly portion of the plat is within the Sunrise River Watershed Management Organization, and the southerly portion of the plat is in the Rice Creek Watershed. The proposed plat is being reviewed by both authorities. And my question is, do we know if there's a plan by either of these entities to address citizens' concerns? Based on the findings of facts by the interim city planner TKD, numbers one through 17, the commission made a motion to forward the CUP for a PUD to the council for approval. Based on those facts and the preliminary plat recommendations of one through nine by TKDA, the commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat for Phases Two and Three. The commission had a brief discussion on the city council's revisions of the billboard recommendations and decided they had no further comments. Council does want to allow billboard protrusions, and I have an illustration here if you want to look at it, of examples for further consideration. Hila Mays, the senior planner, presented a brief outline and review of future mixed-use zoning districts and how they would be integrated into the city's zoning districts. Elizabeth asked for some input for the proposed apartment complex in the mixed-use development in the northeast quadrant. The planners are looking for input on outside exterior materials and overall design ideas. Hermit code is primarily brick, but Elizabeth was advised that is, that isn't used much these days. Ben and Ron provided several pictures for ideas, and everyone agreed that vinyl siding wasn't an option. Mixed architectural panels of ceramic, stone, and metal were suggested. The planned building will be 116 units, so the underground parking made sense. Some thought that the 2020 project in Forest Lake referred to as the Encore Apartments on Fourth Street and 11th Avenue was an acceptable example. There's a website that can be viewed that lists their features and amenities. The final discussion involved the comp plan review for Anoka County Parks and the comp plan for the city of Lionel Lakes as required by the Met Council. The council, or the commission wasn't required to do more than acknowledge the letter, however, the commission made a motion to collaborate with Anoka County Parks transportation and bike trails. Commission made a motion to collaborate with Lionel Lakes regarding utility extension sewer, future trails, and planned traffic changes on 24th Avenue North, Fourth Avenue North, and Lake Drive, as well as future plans for I-35 and I-35E interchanges. So, any questions?
Yep, all kinds of them.
Oh, don't.
You must have had a busy night, huh? I think, let's go back, everyone, up to number 10. We'll start with the Thernbeck Preserve. Jason and Tom, do you want to come up and join Barb? So we've been working on this for quite a while. Has anyone got any, though I have a question to address, is about the Rice Creek Watershed Management and the Boone Lake, or Sunrise. So that's being worked out, I believe.
Yeah, when we submitted the application to the city for preliminary plat review, we submitted in conjunction with Rice Creek.
Okay.
And they had some comments and conditions that we needed to fulfill. Originally, we were attempting to apply for a June approval, but that's been backed up to July 11th with Rice Creek if we stay on task. We've gone back and forth with a couple items. They wanted to get that information back from us today, which they did. They're on track for July 11th.
So then, Elizabeth, does that have to come back to us? Our meeting is the 10th, right?
So my understanding is that there's a jurisdictional boundary between Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization and Rice Creek Watershed District, that we had several conversations with Rice Creek as to determine where that line would be, and that line would then determine what rules were to be applied to the plat. And my understanding is that we did come to a conclusion as to where that line was going to be, and that Rice Creek would require a joint powers agreement and/or a joint agreement between Sunrise and Rice Creek in order to accept that boundary. I understand Rice Creek, they voted on today, subject to some conditions, and now it has to go to Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization for their approval. And so we have two members that sit on that board, and they will bring it to Sunrise, and then they will discuss it there. I originally thought that we could be the, as we said, as the LGU, but I understand from Rice Creek attorneys that it does have to go to the Sunrise Board in order for them to approve that jurisdictional line for this plat. And my understanding is they have a meeting in July.
I think there were two ponds that were bisected by the boundary, as I understood it, right?
Yes.
And I think that's what brought the issue to light, was to decide who would have the jurisdiction for those ponds.
I think ultimately, wasn't it the middle of the road?
Yeah.
That was the jurisdictional line?
Yeah, the jurisdictional boundary is a straight line, you know, through the plat that bisects a couple of the ponds, but the functional boundary, if you will, is going down the roadway. I don't know if that's going to become the jurisdictional boundary or just for this plat.
And my assumption, my assumption is just going to be for this plat, and the joint powers agreement will only cover this plat.
Yeah, I think everything east of Furman would fall in Rice Creek, so we won't be affected with that portion.
In the future.
In the future.
Has anyone else, any questions? If not, will somebody make a motion, please?
There'll be two motions here. One is for the plan unit development conditional use permit, and then the second one would be to approve the preliminary plat. And I just want to note for the council, and certainly the applicant can give you more details, but it has come to my attention that this plat will also need a vacation. And I didn't, I don't know all the details, but certainly we'll process that permit as required for the vacation for that. I don't know if it's an easement or drainage utility easement, I'm not sure of, again, of all the details.
Utility easement that had been granted by the township on the southerly portion of this overall property by the Thernbecks. I think it was, uh... Back in the day, I got a copy of the document. 1999, so I'm sure we all recall this, but it covers kind of a larger area. It covers wetland and the ditch, and there's a portion of it, I think it's oversized a bit. I've got an exhibit that kind of, that shows where it is, and we make note that it needs to be vacated. On our plat, we'll end up rededicating easement over the vast majority of it. There's a couple areas where I do believe it should be vacated so that it doesn't compromise future home sites. I just wanted that to be noted so that everyone was aware of it.
Mr. Mayor and council, that, since there's a final plat that's required, that could be timed to coincide with the final plat. And there's title review and other items, so we can get that done with the final plat.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve the conditional use permit for the planned unit development for 57 lots for the Thernbeck Preserve Phase One, Two, and Three, subject to the planners' comments one through 11, and engineers' condition one through 27, as amended by the planning commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then the motion passes. Would you like to make another one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a preliminary plat to include 40 lots for the Thernbeck Preserve Phase Two and Three, subject to the planner and engineer's conditions as amended by the planning commission, subject to the planning report, planner's report conditions one through nine, engineer's report conditions one through 27, as amended by the planning commission.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, the next thing we'll stake, put Barb, we'll go on to the billboard ordinance. What pages are those on?
I think it's a separate enclosure.
Oh, that was the whole, this is the whole big.
Yeah, big chunk of paper.
Because in our discussions, Elizabeth has come up with a, one more change that we should think about and discuss. When you find it, or Ben.
The one more change that I have, we had that billboards should, the companies should try to the best of their ability to conceal the electrical boxes on the facade of the updated billboard structures. And then we were also, from the last meeting, striking the, the ground equipment and facilities be screened from public on the bottom because they're already fairly small and screened.
Everyone get that?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, the first one would be to require that billboard companies, to the best of their ability, minimize the appearance of the electrical equipment attached to the facade of the updated billboard structures. And then just striking of the, I had on this one, just the, the facilities and ground equipment be screened because they already do kind of maintain the screening, and they're also small electronic boxes. Then there was two discussions I'd like to bring up as well. One, going back to Barb's comment about the extends and protrusions, did we ever come to a final number or percentage that we wanted to discuss? I did look up clear channel size of their average billboard, and it's 14 by 48, which comes to about 652, I believe.
Barb, would you give that to Elizabeth, that page you have, and let her put that on, please?
So while that's zooming in, what we have right now for extends and protrusions is to allow them to go between two to four feet above the top of the billboard, and that it should not be larger than 15% of the face of the billboard. This was kind of mimicked from St. Paul's billboard ordinance. I looked at Minneapolis's billboard ordinance as well, and they have it, that it should not be no more than six feet above the top of the billboard, and 20%, no larger than 20% of the face. So when I initially came up with this, that seemed kind of like the happy medium, but through discussion, we thought maybe, just because sometimes you have different sizes, and as you can see from the examples Barb provided, different designs for what actually is protruding, that maybe it could be something along the lines of 20, it can't be higher than 15% of the width of, or the height of the billboard itself. So 14 feet, which is the typical clear channel one, would be, it couldn't be higher than two feet. But if it was something like 18 feet, it could move up to higher than that. That was another idea, or instead of 15%, it could be 20, 25% of the height of the billboard. Otherwise, we could land on a number, two, four, six feet.
Thank you. Elizabeth, would you elaborate a little bit more?
You know, for the...
You had a reason for what, the numbers you had come up with.
So, for, you know, for the most part, we've had, we've had requests, not a lot of requests, for extensions and protrusions, and we talked basically about going above the billboard and not below. And from my perspective, I wanted to have the code very definitive so that it was easy to apply. And in doing that, we've always, for the sign ordinance, applied a percentage component to the face of the sign. And so, while two to four feet might seem reasonable, I think that's kind of short, you know, I mean, it's small when you're looking at such a large billboard. And so I think if we were to, I realize that St. Paul has two to four, but I think Minneapolis had six, and looking at either a 20, 30%, it really, as long as we can base it on something, whether it's a quarter of the billboard or whether it's, it's much easier to talk to a billboard company and say what your criteria are when you have a reason of why it's based on it. And in this particular case, and that's why I was looking at maybe 25% of the billboard, you know, in height, or something that you can explain back to them. So I wasn't opposed to Minneapolis's criteria because I think you can kind of talk about a quarter percent, or 25% or six feet above. Because when you look at protrusions, it could be a circle, it could be across the board, so it's, six feet is, you need two dimensions as far as square footage because it, it just depends on what the billboard is as to what it might look like or be.
And so you would just like to say a percentage?
I think you can, I think you can use, I think you can use both where it says, it does not extend further than six feet above the billboard, and the extension shall not larger than either, you know, 20, 25, 30%, whatever you think is appropriate. But having those clear criteria is much easier to work with because then the billboards know exactly what your, what code is requiring.
Any discussion, anyone?
I just, I mean, when I was looking at it, I was, I had similar thoughts. I thought the percentage, actually, I didn't think we even needed to say how much. I just thought like 25% sounded like a reasonable number to shoot for, not knowing that there was actual precedent for something like that. Just because when you, you know, you don't want them to have something that extends, you know, twice the height of the, of the original board. So a quarter seems like that would give them enough artistic license to do different things without having it really be very different than the, than the ordinance intended. So I don't know if we actually have to say, "and no more than six feet." It just seems to me that saying 25% is probably reasonable enough, but...
If I may, I've heard it two ways, just in this discussion, 25% of the face or 25% of the...
And I've heard it, if I may, I've heard it two ways, just in this discussion, twenty-five percent of the face, or twenty-five percent of the height, and those would be two different.
I would say the face, yes.
I would say the face also. I think, and that's above, I think when we were talking about extensions, you know, um... So you have, you have extensions that are above, and then extensions out. You know what I mean, from the billboard? And I think, I know you can't see three dimension in here, but that's generally what they'll do. They'll have a picture, and then it'll, it'll come out from the billboard. So I, um, so one is an extension, meaning out, and the other one is extension above. So I don't, are you going to apply the same thing?
The protrusions, right? Protrusions are out.
Protrusions are up.
I, I thought extensions is only being vertical above, rather than protrusions being poking out. I, I still don't really understand the protrusion part, to be honest. I don't know that I've ever seen a billboard that has...
Chick-fil-A cows, do you remember those?
Uh-uh. But...
They protruded, they were actual three-dimensional cows that protruded out.
Ah, okay.
And the powerball, the powerball numbers, they also protrude out.
Oh, okay, all right. I hadn't thought about those, only thought about the high.
How far did the cows protrude?
Probably...
Six feet?
No, I don't think they were six feet, but they were certainly a couple feet out. I don't know if, and if you...
Yeah, I didn't come across something like that with St. Paul or Minneapolis, no. But I would agree, I remember those signs, and it definitely wasn't six, it would have been somewhere between two to three.
And another thought, if we don't put a number on the, not the protrusions, but the...
Extensions.
Extensions above, they could have a six-foot wide, twenty-foot high addition to the sign, which we really don't want.
Well, I guess what I was thinking is that, you know, like, I could imagine somebody designing a sign that might have like a, might look like a rooftop on top. And so it's not going to be a big square on top, it's going to be more like a triangle. And if you took the area of that, it would probably, even if it was fairly high, it would be well under twenty-five percent, and it probably would look okay, it probably wouldn't look odd. So I mean, that, that was, that was what I had in mind, is that you hate to have something, and they're so strict that you're really making it difficult for them to have their artistic license, so...
And the first time around, when the billboard ordinance was in draft, a lot of the companies commented on it, because it was open, open field at that point. There were, I think, three existing billboards maybe at the time. So I don't know if these would be circulated to the billboard companies, but I know that we got a lot of comment twenty years ago, twenty-two years ago now.
That they would like?
Just on, you know, the, the dimensions of the billboard, the angles that they're placed at. So I would expect that if you create this opportunity in your ordinance, they're going to tell you if it's too restrictive based upon their recent extensions and protrusions, the cows, the powerballs, you know.
Well, it looks like our recommendation's silent on the protrusions. So I don't know if that, if silent means no, I think that's what you've always told us, isn't it?
Yeah, and if it, that's what, that's what, yes, protrusions would be prohibited if it's not explicit in the code.
Is there any reason to prohibit them, or?
I don't think so.
Just put a number on it? Say they can go six feet out, and six feet out.
No more than six feet out? Seems really far out there, but...
Yeah, I would probably...
Good-sized cow.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it works from wind loading or anything like that, but...
Two to four feet?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we have to have a motion on adding this to this, or did you?
No, that, it's, right, since it's, since it's not in draft yet, that's just direction back to the planning commission and the drafters.
We, this wasn't going back to the planning commission, this was going to...
Well, yeah, I understand that, but that it will go back to the planning commission.
For, for public hearing.
Yep.
So would someone make the motion, please?
I do have one other comment, actually, before we end, if you don't mind. In regards to our discussion last city council, when it came to trying to minimize the number of billboards that we have in the district in general, I believe, Bill, you offered some examples as to we can, if there, if there isn't already a primary use on the property, we could write it in that the billboard can go there, but once there's a primary use, the billboard have to be taken down. Is there anything like that for if there already is a primary use and a billboard? Would it be possible, once the IUP ends, if there is interest in this, once the IUP ends, that they would have to remove the billboard if there was already a primary use as another commercial building or something?
Yes, you could set it up so that somebody who's already redeveloped, and, and we've got homes still in the district that are kind of reliant upon some of that income for carrying their taxes and assessments. But, so, so the question would be, can you make a distinction for sites that haven't been redeveloped, another category of sites that have been redeveloped and, and still have a billboard, and then finally vacant or undeveloped property? I think we have to be very careful how we draw those lines, so it doesn't look discriminatory, but I think we can draw those lines if we do so with some care.
And I was just wondering if that's something we're still interested in. Throughout this process, we have heard that that is something we'd like, is to minimize billboards, not get rid of them completely, not try to set a number that they could be set at, but in the future, maybe having less in the district would be kind of nice in that three-mile distance.
I think so.
Something to invest, just some language or literature.
Sure, we'll, in, in the drafting, we'll come up with something, and it'll be highlighted, so you know that it's, it's a proposal, it's not, it's not a recommendation, it's an alternative essentially.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ben?
No, th- those are the two, thanks.
Anything else, Bill? All right, now we're ready for a motion.
So I'll move to direct the city attorney to draft billboard ordinance for public hearing at planning commission meeting on July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we're on to the Anoka County Parks twenty forty comp plan review. We've all read this with interest, Elizabeth, would you highlight it?
Anoka County Parks submitted the plan for Columbus to review, and we did have Hila Mays review that plan, and she offers some recommendations. The planning commission talked about the recommendations, and they accepted Hila's recommendations on, I want to say it's page three. Although it was pointed out to me that there are no page numbers on the agenda, but I think Hila's report has some page numbers on it.
You're on page three?
It's page three of her report.
I think it's page eight.
Eight?
Or I should, maybe it starts on, starts on something that says page one. It's like this, backwards. There, it's right there. Nope, nope.
So in this particular case, the planning commission did talk about, in, in, so there's a, the county would, the county has very limited east and west corridors where you can get from one part of the county to the other. It's a, it's a...
Sorry.
And, and so in their plan, they show one hundred and forty-first as the east to west corridor for the county in the future. And, and while that's great for planning purposes, I think that would, that would take a lot of work to do that. But they, they do identify as that an east and west corridor. And then they also talk about Lyons and Elmcrest, which is on the east side of the freeway, as an alternate corridor to the freeway district, just like West Freeway Drive is on the, on the west side. And also they talk about the I thirty-five W and E connector that would take a lot of coordination of wetlands and such in order to have interchanges on both. So again, these were all future plans, there's, we have most of this language in our comprehensive plan, although I don't know that we talk about one forty-first as a east-west corridor. As a matter of fact, there's a private, you know what I mean, section in there that we don't even have road jurisdiction today connecting to Georgia Hill, but you never know what happens in the future.
Anyone have any questions or discussion? Hearing none, may we have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the planning commission's recommendation and direct city administrator to draft response to Anoka County Parks twenty forty comprehensive plan to include recommendations from the city planner. Memo dated six ten nineteen.
All those in favor?
Nope.
Whoops, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion passes. And now the Lino Lakes Comp Plan Review, motion, please.
So the Lino Lakes plan is a little bit more significant for Columbus, as they do talk about potential future extension for sewer service to, along Lake Drive and County Road twenty-three in Lino Lakes. And several years ago, I want to say, not the last comp plan, but the comp plan before, there were a lot of plans in Lino Lakes to extend, extend to the north, and we had several conversations with Lino Lakes to make sure that they included Columbus in the sizing of pipes in order for us to use the interceptor for Met Council. The last go-around, there really wasn't as much development, it had dropped off, and so we didn't really have an opportunity to talk with them. But I do think that the plan they have now, it's pretty aggressive, and they're talking about in two thousand thirty, looking at extensions. So I do think it's important that at least this comment and some dialogue does start to happen if you think that you want to see the potential for sewer and water along twenty-three in Columbus. Because that would be our only opportunity to serve that area.
And do you feel that would be good for increasing in future development along Lake Drive?
You know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we would ever expand the district, but I certainly think that in order to supply or to allow the connections, it will certainly be dense enough, because we realize that the cost in any other area in Columbus, we just wouldn't be able to provide sewer and water, that the distance between homes and stuff makes it cost prohibitive to do that. But the businesses on Lake Drive are close enough that we would probably be able to serve, and they're close enough to the road, that there wouldn't be a lot of infrastructure to the actual buildings that each site would have, so... And again, it would be a choice as to whether they want to or not, but today, it's all private septic and well.
By having that, wouldn't it make the people that are actually living, you know, residential, but in a commercial area, it'd be easier for them to sell their property to commercial venture?
No, I, I think with that potential, you have the ability for more uses, certainly fire suppression on a well, and it's tough. Not that you can't do it, you can have tanks and booster pumps and all those things, but all those add costs. So I think anytime you have the potential for a public system, it makes your property more saleable, because you have more buyers, you have more people who'll be interested in it.
Anyone? Jeff, anything from you?
No. No, not on it.
And so what we're going to direct you to do is to just reply?
So what happens is, is when we have comments like this, there are forms, and it basically says, "We have no comments," or "We have comments." And if you decide that these are the four bullet points you'd like us to comment with, we'll certainly include them in our response.
Okay, so a motion to include recommendations, that's the four topics, four points? That's...
Is there a second? Do you just add this to the motion, or do we make two separate motions?
Can we just go back one, a little bit? Okay, so you know that Anoka County is talking about Eightieth possibly being a connector between thirty-five E and thirty-five W, and that sound like in their father plan? Okay. But Lino doesn't sound like that, they sound like, boy, we're just ready to go and rock and roll. They don't, can't afford it, I'm sure, you know, with the connection and everything. But what is the real possibility of that, and is that, I mean, that seems to me to be something that would really impact Columbus, and unfortunately, closer to my neighborhood. So basically, they're going to take over East Rondo Lake Road, it looks like to me, from Lino Lakes, but that turns right into Furman, and then all the houses down there. So then you've got a lot of traffic coming in, and I guess we could put restrictions, road restrictions, on the fact that we wouldn't want trucks coming down there, whatever, but you're going to have people cutting through to get to Lake Drive or whatever, going down and around Crossway. So it, at what point do you say, gee, we really would like not to do this?
So you know, Anoka County studied this, again, because there was, there weren't enough east-west corridors, and there's a lot of wetland in that area. And so when they did this study, I want to say it was back in two thousand and four, there were several different scenarios, I want to say there were six or seven of them. We had public meetings and, and talked through them all, and Anoka County then selected one to put in their comprehensive plan. It's a very expensive plan, there's a lot of wetlands going through there. We had a fair amount of people from the neighborhood saying, these are, you know, these are, roads are not big enough, and how would you ever do this? And, and they felt that, um, that they had, that they wanted to put something in the plan to preserve that quarter, to know that, yes, if there was ever money to do it, that, that they wanted to look at that, and that was the best scenario that they could come up with at the time. I think there's way more traction for an interchange on thirty-five E and looking at Eightieth Street and/or Seventieth Street, or County Road Four, for a new interchange on County, or Highway Thirty-five E versus Thirty-five W. Now with the new bridge, and with the, looking at the bridge going over Thirty-five W, and the structural problems that they had previously, I think you'll see some different scenarios coming through, because we all realize that putting roads through wetlands are very expensive, and the likelihood of that ever happening is getting less. So I think you can certainly, your comment back to them can simply be, and not the Lino Lakes plan, but the Anoka County Parks plan, saying, you know, maybe, maybe you should take another look, we don't think this is ideal. You know, and maybe some alternatives can be looked at. And those are, those are all, you're able to do that now, because, I mean, these are your comments back, and they, they may take that under advisement, there's new people in the transportation department, and maybe they can come up with something else.
So how did she go about, how did we go about adding those comments?
You'd, yeah, you'd need a consensus of the council, either by motion, or at least indication that, you know, three or more of you agree with that comment, and then it would be added to the motion?
Yep.
And that was a motion you just approved, so I think...
Right, I was just going to say, we already approved that one.
Right, you would reconsider that motion to add the additional comment, if you, if three or more of you agree.
Again, my feeling is that the timing is such that, that they are putting it off, and knowing that that one bridge is not done so well, I thought, well, maybe that's going to change their, their mind on that. So I, I, you know, I don't know that it makes sense making a comment now, but down the road. I don't think they're going to get there in ten years, so the next plan would be, I guess, where you would...
But again, if they're looking at structure in the bridge, it might move it up. I mean, you just never know, especially with, you know, funding. When one project isn't ready, they look at another project, if it's a maintenance issue, and the maintenance issues is, is too big, and they're going to look at rebuilding, I mean, you never really know what's going to be around the corner with those types of things. So it's, to me, it's better to get your comments in, and then it's of record.
How do you feel about, I mean, it is in my neck of the woods, but it, it is...
In mine, too.
Right, but the fact is that they're saying that they want to do this plan on a road that runs into ours, you know, and then right through the heart of Columbus, if you go out Crossways Lake. Do we want that kind of traffic?
Well, I, I mean, I think your point, Elizabeth, is that there's, at the time this was written, they didn't know about the bridge, the Fifty-four Bridge, and what that might mean. So I think couching it in that, you know, that there's probably other, other alternatives that would make more sense. would make more sense, might be an okay way to reconsider this plan because you're not going to have to go through wetlands. They may end up having to, it may make sense if they have to replace that bridge, if they could relocate it in a place that it would make it easier to get on and off and feed into roads that already exist. That would be a way better plan than trying to shore up the road that's practically falling apart already because of all the wetlands around it.
I mean, how do you guys feel about it when, you know, you aren't down there, but you have to understand that it's coming down onto the Lino Lakes Road, going down Furman, going around a crossways and dumping onto Lake Drive, which is already, as we know, really busy?
I don't think it's going to happen. I don't think they're going to do that, but...
Well, in that case, do you want to... How do we do this again?
You would reconsider the motion regarding the approval of, or the comments on the Anoka County Comprehensive Plan and then you would offer an amendment that would essentially explore alternatives that have less impact on wetlands and residential areas. Two steps.
That's to make the motions.
How do you reconsider the motion, the last one, just, do I reconsider?
Make a motion to reconsider, yep.
Motion to reconsider.
My motion on the park plan.
Anoka County Park's 2040 Comp Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
So now it's back in front of you.
So the amendment would be...
To make an additional comment, to make a motion to make an additional comment to the Anoka County Park's 2040 Comprehensive Plan to...
To consider alternatives.
Yeah, consider alternatives to the connection of 35E and 35W to, through the process of 80th, which can impact wetlands and the residential area in Columbus.
Which would have less impact on?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right. Very good.
Make a motion to accept the...
Lino? Did we do the Lino Lakes one yet?
No, it's forgotten.
No.
I guess.
And do we have to do the same thing for Lino, or we just do it to Anoka?
You should consider whether, per Elizabeth's comment, you want to explore the extension of utilities with Lino Lakes, up Lake Drive, is that where we're looking?
Yep.
And that's the same motion?
But is that also, you also want to include what we said to Anoka in there on 80th? Because they want to connect it too?
And in their, in Hi-Lo's comments there, it says coordinating with them regarding the planning of the future, I-35 and E interchanges and also coordinating the upgrades. And they call it 24, or that's the Northeast Road. We could, it's not in this list, but we could add it to this list.
We have a similar bullet point. So then the, it would be the recommendations of the planner, but also include the same comment as you did in the prior motion.
So do we have to make a separate motion for that?
No, you can, because you're taking it up for the first time, you can just include it all in one motion.
All right.
So, I'll try. So I move to accept the planning commission's recommendation and direct the city administrator to draft a response to the Lino Lakes 2040 Comprehensive Plan to include the recommendations from the city planner memo dated 6/10/19 and an additional recommendation to encourage coordination with the extension of the utilities along Lake Drive.
Second.
Oh, and add the previous comment that we made to the Anoka County Plan, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, they have a second.
I second.
Second, okay. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Holy smokes.
Yeah, I'd say.
Anything else, Barb, that you can add that we forgot?
Got it covered.
Did you get your question answered? Didn't you ask a question about who they could talk to at the watershed?
Right, I was wondering if it was going to be some kind of open house to answer residents' concerns regarding runoff from the...
I don't know that there is, but Dennis, you're the engineer. So remember at the last meeting, that fellow stood up at the end and he was worried about his water being, or being more flooded than he is?
It was planning commission, I wasn't there.
He wasn't there.
Oh, no? Yeah.
It was a public hearing.
Yep, so it'd be planning commission.
So basically, he was concerned about the, it was in Phase 3 and he lived just south of that area and he felt that someone should really look at that area because he felt by putting more homes that he was going to get further flooded because there is a wetland there and he does have water issues when, in some years that have heavy rainfall. So I believe Jason Rudd talked about the stormwater ponds and that it should, it should take care of that water and in this particular case, that phase Rice Creek would be looking at in their review.
That's correct. Excuse me, that's in Rice Creek Watershed District, so they do require ponding to capture the two 10 and 100-year stormwater events, both rate control and volume control. And then there is a existing ditch in between that resident and the development that would take surface water. But I think Rice Creek would be the best party to speak with if there was concerns.
He was advised to do, but it kind of left him up in the air, like, how do you go about getting Rice Creek to talk to these residents? There were, he was, there were more people here than just the one fellow, about half a dozen people left. So is there some way we can talk to the people in that neighborhood and ensure that all things are going to...
I'm assuming you'd have to have a neighborhood meeting of some type, but...
Would be responsible. Watershed.
Yeah, since they have the stormwater jurisdiction in that area, that would be the best entity to speak with.
We're trying to look out for these residents, take an active role.
If there's a group of residents or a spokesperson for the group of residents, they could contact myself or the city or, and we can direct them to the, who to speak with at Rice Creek.
Yep, I haven't received an email, but he said he would.
Thank you, Barb.
Thanks.
We're down to number 11, it's public open forum. Anyone here for public open forum? If not, we'll move on to the famous City of Ham Lake Letter, number 12. Pages 42 to 48, and in your additions, it's A3 and A5.
The Ham Lake Letter is in your agenda packet, but the letter that was written to all three of the other partners in the Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization is in your additions. This is the same issue that was, I think the issue has not changed. I think Ham Lake believes that the operation or the administrative cost should be allocated as the proportionate share of, I don't, I don't remember if it's acre or per capita, but the same percentage that you have in the jurisdiction. And there are others who feel that that is not the way it should be allocated. I think in 2015, Columbus did not want to get in the middle of that and so they simply did not respond.
So what I remember from our meeting there was that Linwood was the loser in that change and wasn't everybody else pretty much a winner? Do you remember, Shelley?
Right, and the thing is, is that Linwood is the winner in the allocation of funds because of the CARPs, so.
Okay. So from Columbus's standpoint, if we said this, that we agreed with this, we would end up paying less to them than we are right now, which would be fine with me.
But since the letter's four years old, what does that mean?
They were referencing that letter to the current situation because it came up back in 2015 and we didn't respond, so they're basically saying, same question, respond.
So what do you, is everything?
You have a history, Danny. What do you think?
We're paying less, we will pay less if we change it.
You got the amount, we'll be paying less?
Yes, we pay less.
There's nothing wrong with that.
That's what I said.
A hundred percent win.
Yeah.
They're the ones that are driving that, though, Ham Lake is, and didn't it say in the back here that they were talking about, you know, they had several issues and then one of the things was that they wanted to not be in three watershed districts. So then they made a motion to try and get into, and dump us, you know? You know? So then it would be like Columbus would have to say, you know, and we've already signed it. You understand what I'm saying?
You know, we're under the same situation where, you know, we have three watershed districts, too. It's costly, you know, because we have three sets of plans, you know, we have to make sure that everybody understands what watershed they stuck their in, but at the end of the day, each of these watershed districts, it's because the water flows in that direction. And so to simply say, I opt out and I want to be in someone else's, the water doesn't flow that way. So I don't know how you can simply say that because...
Well, I understood their letter to basically refer to this amendment and the amendment is really only talking about the operating funds, the change to the allocation of the operating funds. So I don't think they were asking anybody to weigh in on the other issues.
They are asking, but what I'm saying is we need to get this passed before, if they were to be successful in this and they're no longer part of our watershed district, it's a moot point. If we want to save that $1,000 or whatever, then...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, we just...
They tried it before and it wasn't successful.
Okay.
I don't think they legally can opt out with, the watershed is based upon the boundaries of where the water flows, as Elizabeth said, and I don't think they legally have the ability to say, we're going to join somebody else. So I think it's, I'm speculating, but I'm thinking that's why it failed the last time.
Did they have Bowser at that time, though? Because they're going to Bowser to do it.
Yeah. I don't recall, I don't recall actually the outcome.
So, does someone please make the motion?
So I'll move to direct the city administrator to draft a letter to the City of Ham Lake indicating support for the joint powers agreement amendment in allocation for administration expenses for the Sunrise Water Management Organization.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Nope, I don't understand, how are they assessing people now? How is it, how is it done?
It's just a straight percentage.
Thirty-five, I said 25?
Yep, 25% of the administrative costs across the board.
Just the administrative costs, correct?
Correct, and I'm pretty sure that's what they're objecting to. The operational costs are allocated per percentage.
Right.
Okay, and they want to do it how?
They want to give us less, less percentage because we're not as big as some of the other entities.
They want the administrative and the operating to be allocated the same way.
Which would have been the street.
The per capita. Or per usage.
Yep.
Because we're smaller percent, we have just a little bit in the...
We don't get any much money from E-Wig, do we?
We pay them.
We pay them.
We pay them? I mean, I think, didn't somebody say it was around $1,000, $1,100 or something? It's not huge, but it's savings.
Well, if it's right, I guess that's a big thing. I think it's fair.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next is the engineer report.
Well, coincidentally, my first item is the Sunrise WMO, Fourth Generation Watershed Management Plan. So I reviewed that and provided you some comments. They had sent out a draft a few months ago and I provided comments, they incorporated most of those. So my comments are really things for you to consider. The first one was the exact same issue that you just spoke about with Ham Lake. And I had come up with a calculation that it would save Columbus about $1,100. Ham Lake would save a lot more because their percentage is a lot less. So that's something you might want to consider, which you just did. The other items in my memo were just information that there are half a dozen things that in their Fourth Generation Plan that the city has to do going forward. More reporting, some training for public works folks, things that will cost, spend more resources and more funding. So it was just FYI that, for you to be aware of. So Elizabeth, I'm not sure if there's a motion required because number one was already taken care of with the Ham Lake issue and the other items are information.
Yeah, we'll need a motion for the Sunrise, item number one, item number two, and item number three. We already did number one, correct?
Yes, that's with the letter.
Items number two and three.
Are those, you said those are just comments, Dennis?
Correct.
Four, two, and three? So we can send a letter back to the Sunrise with those, with those, just those comments? Because when we're sending the letter to Ham Lake, so we can send, under number one, we can send the same comment that you indicated to Ham Lake, we will also send that to Sunrise, or Sunrise Water Maintenance Organization.
May we have a motion?
I make a motion to direct city administrator to draft a letter to Sunrise Watershed District for item one, which is the feedback comments, right?
It's as reflected in the engineer's memo.
Okay. And item two, item three as information.
Yes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Northeast Quad Utilities Pay Request.
Before you move on, I just wanted to make sure that the memo I had sent had seven comments, feedback comments.
Okay.
So, and again, two through seven were just information. I don't know if you got that second page. All right, that's just, again, more information, just information for city council. Things to be aware of that you'll have to, staff will have to do going forward. Not necessarily meant as feedback comments to Sunrise.
And the amount due is $317,430.86.
So the next item was the pay request for the Northeast Quadrant Utilities, that is the one for Metro Utilities Incorporated. That one is actually the $205,380.88 pay request, number one. That one, I believe, was in your packet. So we're recommending that that be approved. They are 90% complete with the project and this is about 80% of the cost.
That's the big packet, right?
It's this packet. Way in the back.
There it is.
So just looking for a motion to approve pay request, number one, to Metro Utilities for the Northeast Quadrant Utility Extension Project.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. And now we need a motion for the...
The next item was the pay request, number one, for the Southwest Area Utilities Phase 2 Utility Extension to Vite Construction in the... Utility Extension to Vite Construction in the amount of $317,430.86.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Transportation project status.
So just a quick update on the projects we have under construction. The city's 2019 street improvements on Notre Dame and 181st have had the first lift of Batuminus, have had the, the Batuminus ground up and reclaimed, and the first lift placed, and the driveway work done. They will be, the plan is to finish the Ware Course paving tomorrow and Friday, weather dependent. The Northeast Quadrant Utilities, I mentioned, are about ninety percent done, just restoration items remaining. The Southwest Area Utilities, as of this morning, we received the easement for the Southwest Corner Property Owner through City Attorney's Office. And as such, we were out staking it this afternoon, and the contract will be back in next week to start some of the clearing. Probably with full construction in about two weeks, he'll be back in, remobilized. Other than that, we also have the Skata Ziegler Tank Project going on. The contractor started delivering some of the equipment this week. And we'll, we have a better update for you on the next meeting as far as the schedule. Hornsby Street realignment, we are, have been working with the county. The plan is to get that advertised by the end of July. First or week or two of August in that timeframe with construction likely occurring September, October, November this year, and finishing up in the spring. And I know we need further discussion on Hornsby Street South as well. One thing I would advise on that note is if it's, if you're planning on it being a project next year, to get it decided and, and designed and bid in early spring. Bid prices are currently twenty-five to thirty percent higher right now than they were three or four months ago on projects.
And that's usual every year, or is this your special?
It is usual every year. It's atypical that it's that big of a number this year. It's usually ten percent or more, but contractors are, are full with work and some of the quantity prices are up. Hoping they go back down by the time Hornsby Street realignment bids in a couple of months.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to add?
What was the reason they pulled out of 181st?
Why did they leave the job?
Uh, it was a contractor had some issue with his reclaimer to start with. And then he had, they were trying to coordinate with the county's Kettle River Boulevard Project. So he pulled out to another job, and it's taking longer there to come back. So if you notice, the county's Kettle River Boulevard Project is done. That went pretty quickly. And 54 is open, if you've driven that, so...
Anything else?
That's it. Oh, sorry. I do have one thing. I don't know if any of you get the notices for the design-build project, but the northbound ramps will be closed starting July 1st. I just made copies of the, of the notice that came out online. I believe city staff likely gets those, so... Northbound ramps, meaning if you're going northbound on 35, you won't be able to get off on 97. And if you're on 97, you won't be able to get on 35 northbound ramp. So the two northbound ramps, one to get off, one to get on, and it'll be closed most of July, that was what they're saying. And so if you want to get westbound on Lake Drive, you have to go up to Broadway, turn around, and come back. That was the plan all along for the, for this one month duration. 97 will be open, but you won't be able to get to it too easily.
Are they rebuilding the ramps then, or what are they doing? At the time it shut down?
Rebuilding the ramps, the two northbound. Eventually, they'll shut the, the one southbound ramp down from 97 to get on, staggered with these closures.
And that'll happen later this fall?
I don't know if it's right after this, or if it's later this fall.
I don't know if you noticed today, or if anybody was up in Forest Lake, but they were doing some major repairs on that bridge in its cement deck, but they were putting blacktop on the bridge, and they had closed one lane down. So I'm not sure how long that project is going to take place, but hopefully not after July 1st.
It was in Forest Lake?
Today, yeah.
The new bridge that they built a few years ago?
Yes.
They had to buckle maybe to repair it.
And I heard that, I heard that the bridge buckled, and I'm, I'm thinking it might be, might not be in that area.
All right, moving on, we'll have the attorney report, number 14.
Well, I just want to say I tested the S-curves on New 54. They're bank nicely. Now, on my report, a couple, mayor council, a couple meetings ago, we went through, and we may have discussed it at a couple of meetings, but we went through a memo on a possible hotel tax that would fund convention activities, tourism promotion, the like. The way the statute is set up is you have authority as a local unit of government to adopt a hotel tax. And the vast majority, I think something like ninety percent of it, has to go to fund tourism promotion activities, kind of like a convention bureau. That convention bureau could be simply, you know, someone here at staff. It could be done in conjunction with the racetrack. It could be done separate from that. But essentially, it gives you this opportunity to promote Columbus as a destination. I believe Elizabeth has had some conversations and others with folks at the track, and they're not opposed to it. I think, my understanding is they want to make sure that they're competitive with surrounding communities, so we would do a simple study of, you know, the taxes, hotel taxes in, in nearby communities and see what, you know, Blaine is kind of a destination. There's, I believe there's a hotel tax in Forest Lake.
You know, I, I don't, I'm not sure whether there is or there isn't. I know, I know when we spoke to Taro today, he what, he knew Blaine did, but he wasn't sure. But apparently one of the cities, whether it was line of Forest Lake, did not. And so I wasn't familiar with it, so I'm not which, sure which one it doesn't.
And we would recommend, if you want to go forward with that, that we bring it forward before the, obviously, construction is done, so from day one, it's added to the, to the bill. We've talked about this at the previous meeting. The reason local authorities like it is you're, you know, the tax is paid by people visiting, not people living here, generally. I mean, obviously with some exceptions if you have visitors coming. So if you, with that, if you want us to put together that ordinance, it'd be fairly simple. We'd bring it forward in, in the coming weeks or months. It's not, I don't think the construction, I don't, when the construction is done, but it's, it's still...
Moving along.
It's moving along. So we're just looking for your direction, whether that's something you want us to move forward on.
It's one to three percent, is it? Are we looking at?
I have no idea what it is.
That's a typical add, is one to three percent. I think it can be up to, I can't remember what it can be up to, but that's, that's a typical range, one to three percent. And we would come back with an ordinance with a study that shows you what the nearest communities that have a tax are charging, Blaine being the most notable example.
Someone like to make the motion, please?
Make a motion to move to direct the city attorney to draft a tourism ordinance for a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting on July 17th, 2019.
Second, that's probably going to be too soon, huh?
And the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I don't think it needs to be, it doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission. We can certainly send it there because it's not a zoning ordinance amendment. So it doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission. You can certainly route it there if you want their feedback. And I think that we would not, there's a couple of other ordinances ahead of it. So I think July 17th might be a little aggressive. I would say before the end of August, if that, if we can be that open-ended.
And do we have to have a public hearing?
You do not, but that's a good idea.
Okay, so I restate. I remake the motion. I move to direct the city attorney to draft a tourism ordinance for a public hearing with a meeting at a future date.
And do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Anything else, counselor?
That's all I have.
City council members report.
Nothing to report.
Yeah?
I just have one thing. I think we all received an email from a resident, Michelle Betts, wanting to talk about our friends on Lake Drive, the trucking company. So I have a meeting set up with her tomorrow night just to hear what her concerns are. FYI.
And will you bring that back to the council next time?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing, nothing to report.
Shelley? And I have nothing tonight. So, we had nothing from the public?
Well, actually, we, we had the Fall Fest, too, right? Meeting that we just went to last week? An update from there?
Yeah, Thursday was the Fall Fest, wasn't it?
I don't have any notes. It's coming along.
Fall is coming.
There's...
Days are getting shorter right now.
Yeah.
It's pretty much just rubber stamping everything as that goes along and... I did have, I guess, one question. What about the issue that was brought up to us about the swimming pool fence? Has that been addressed?
The variance application will go before the Planning Commission on July 17th. The, the gentleman that came before you did end up applying for the variance.
Anything else? There is no public works report tonight, and so Public Information Coordinator report.
Hi, I have a report for you tonight.
All right.
All right, so included in your packet was a report that I wrote regarding a landlock parcel off of Broadway Avenue that was donated to the city by the Haggards in 1986. It was donated to the city with a deed restriction, which only allowed the property to be used for park, parkland and open space purposes. And I believe it's state law that says such deed restrictions are no longer valid after 30 years. So we've hit that 30-year mark, and now the city has a choice. They can dispose the land, dispose of the land through a public sale, or you can offer the land back to the original landowners who dedicated it to the city. Included in there are recommendations. The process is as follows. The city council would refer the land sale to the Planning Commission for review. The Planning Commission would then write a report stating whether or not that land designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan. At the same time, the city would conduct a title review, and at that time also determine what easements or rights associated with the partial, parcel that should be retained. After the report is received by the council from the Planning Commission, city staff do recommend getting an appraisal and holding a neighborhood meeting to discuss the future of what's termed Volga Street. After the neighborhood meeting, then, we would put the parcel up for sale using a public bidding process. So I don't know if we want to pull up a map and show them what we're talking about. But I do think it's important to remember that there should be a restriction on the deed for 33 feet on this parcel to extend the roadway and also space for a cul-de-sac at the end of Volga Street. Volga Street right now is a private driveway. It's a public right-of-way with a private driveway underneath it, if I understand that correctly. So the, you can see that there's 66 feet dedicated just south, and then the 33 feet kind of drops off. So we would want to maintain 33 feet of that parcel and then enough based on probably the engineer's recommendations for a cul-de-sac in the future. That lots maybe 7.47 acres. If I remember correctly.
And it's buildable?
Yeah, it's pretty dry. I mean, you do see that there is a ditch, I'm pretty sure, running through the, the southern half of it, but I would say it's buildable in the northern half at least.
And so then you need two motions, correct?
Correct, so right now, the comprehensive plan does need to be amended to designate this parcel as rural residential. And then from there, we would, the council would direct the Planning Commission to put, repair a report saying that the sale is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't know, Elizabeth, if that needs to be changed at all for the comprehensive plan amendment, or if that would, that motion would work.
I, in, in the motions that I drafted, we do have time to get this in, you know what I mean, to the current draft. So it would just be changing the land designation from what now is this park to rural residential zoning, and then we would be able to do that. It was actually direction last year, but we noticed that the map didn't have it on it. So we would just call Hyland and tell her to change it.
Are the, has, are these landowners still with us?
I don't know, and I haven't been able to locate a phone number or address for them.
Original owner is not with us anymore.
Pardon?
You asked, what was your question?
I was wondering whether the people who dedicated this, the land are still with us.
Elmer is not.
Okay.
That's all I know.
I just didn't know if we had notified him of our intent.
I don't think, his wife is either. I don't know. I know Elmer is not.
Okay.
So no, we haven't.
Okay.
Would someone like to make the motion, please?
So I'll move to make the change to the draft of the Columbus Comprehensive, 2040 Comprehensive Plan that has yet to be submitted to designate parcel ID 03-32-22-34-0006 and parcel 03-32-22-42-006 as rural residential with the intent to dispose or sell the property.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else?
We need one more motion.
Oops.
Yep, to direct the Planning Commission to prepare a report stating that the sale of the parcel as rural residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
City administrators report.
Okay, so we, the city council held a workshop earlier, and there were several outcomes of that, of the workshop. And per the rules of our workshop, we don't do, we don't make any motions at workshop. We just have discussion. And so there were several items. The first one that we talked about was Pine Street. The council was presented with a petition two meetings ago indicating that there were some residents that felt that there was a water issue along Pine Street, and it's been longstanding. We've heard about this water issue over the past several years, and especially at one, one address where consistently it appears that there's a water problem. After quite a bit of discussion at the workshop, the outcome of the discussion was that we would contact those property owners and indicate to them that we would like to do a ditch maintenance project. And included in that project would be culvert replacement, and we would like to replace the culvert within our project, along with knowing that when we replaced the culvert, there would be some, I don't know if you want to call it damage, but some impacts to their driveway apron and the cost of replacing the apron would be also included in that cost. I'm not sure that we discussed where the money would come from, but I will look into the budget to see where the maintenance project dollars would come from in order to do this project. During our discussion, we did, it was felt that the project is important as we do have jurisdiction over roads and ditch maintenance. And in this particular case, the road culverts are blocking the water drainage.
Anybody have any questions? I think we hashed that out pretty thoroughly. Lydia Sessner?
Well, you need a motion, right?
Oh?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to direct the city administrator to contact property, property owners affected at 6443, 6343, 6139, and 6559 Pine Street, and 13324 Zodiac Street to put them on notice of the ditch maintenance project and their appropriate share of the project for the driveway material and culvert replacement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're on the city assessor.
During our local board and appeal and equalization meeting, our current city assessor indicated today that he is planning on retiring at the end of the year, and our current contract does end at the end of this year. We received a letter from Anoka County indicating that they would be happy to supply us with a bid for that service. And I have prepared a motion, as we discussed, because we felt it was important to not only receive a bid from Anoka County, but perhaps from others, to see what, if we can find the most cost-effective way to provide that service for Columbus.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city minister to receive a bid from Anoka County for the city assessor services for 2019, and to draft an RFP and advertise for city contract services for same services to compare cost.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. City planner?
Late last year, our planner of a number of years retired, and at that time, we indicated that we were going to have interim planning services. And we kind of discussed, discussed what our next steps were going to be. And in this case, the consensus was that we were going to draft an RFP for planning services, and we were going to distribute it to at least three companies to compare cost and services.
Someone like to make a motion, please?
Motion to direct the city administrator to draft an RFP for the city planner services.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one, the city has received an application from John Arnt, who is a resident on 167th Avenue, for an excavation permit, an interim use permit, and a variance application as he would like to excavate upland, turning into wetland, in order to enhance his ponds and to develop a agriculture pond. My question before the, the council during the workshop was that in this particular case, when we have these type of applications, we would mail notice out to everyone within 350 feet of those properties. In this particular case, this application does request hauling activities. And, and Bill, you can help me out on this, because I wasn't quite sure how we would do this. But I felt it was important, and I know this is beyond my scope, so I knew I needed to come to the council for a policy decision, because I do feel that because there's hauling activities and there's a variance requesting a variance for hauling activities on city roads versus county roads, that it was important to notify all the residents on the road and not just residents within 350 feet of this resident, which is outside the scope of the law.
Mr. Mayor and Council, generally, we've had advised that you not increase the applicant's requirements on a, on a subjective, case-by-case basis. So I think the requirement on the applicant would be to provide the names and the notice, you know, I know you, you do the notice, but that would be part of the application, and that is a separate action that the city would undertake the additional notification. So we're not, what I'm trying to say is we're not putting an additional burden on the applicant that we don't put on other applicants, so we're treating the applicant consistently. But the city may, on its own, decide to notify a greater area. That wouldn't be a cost to the applicant. It wouldn't be necessarily part of the application. It would be in connection with the hauling. So I just think you want to have a clear distinction between the application requirements that any applicant is, needs to meet, and, and the city's decision, because of the hauling activity, to notify a wider area. Does that make sense? So it's, it seems like a, maybe a technicality without a difference. You want to serve the, if you decide that this is the direction you want to go in, because of the hauling activities, you, you may want to provide greater notice, but that isn't, that should not be a requirement on the applicant.
But we can do that?
I don't think there's anything wrong with providing the notice, but it wouldn't be an application requirement.
So just informing neighbors is considered onerous?
It's not that it's onerous. It's that you, you have a set of requirements in your code, and the applicant, if they tick off those requirements, they've met the, under statute 15.99, they've met their application requirements. So we can't put that cost on them and that activity on them, even though I know staff does the notice. So what I'm saying is we have a very clear line between what's required in the application and the fact that you, as a council, may choose to notify a wider area.
So the only difference that I see is that we pay for the postage for the additional mailings that will be done. Is that, am I understanding?
That's the practical effect. And the, and the legal effect and intent is that we're not adding to application requirements that are not in our code.
Okay.
If that's the case, I don't know if that's right. I don't know if I worded that right.
Okay.
Would someone like to make the motion, please?
So I'll make a motion to direct city staff to prepare extended mailing list to notify all property owners on 167th and Zodiac of applicant John Arnt's hauling activities.
And I would just add, with the cost of the extended mailing list to be borne by the city.
With the cost of the extended mailing list to be borne by the city.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
One other thing that we discussed, Bill, during our workshop, was we, we have a developer that would like to have a development on Lake Drive, and it would come under a CIC plat, which is a community common interest plat. And we talked about, you know, different uses coming in under that. And the conclusion was that they felt that we should treat it the same as the Northeast Quad. And, and I know this is going to be quite shocking to you, because they feel that maybe the PUD should be applicable in the Lake Drive area also, and it would be treated very similar where the association would apply for a planned, planned unit development. And then each of the owners would come in on their own for a conditional use permit, because they are allowing outdoor storage and other activities. And then we would be able to limit the activities in each of the units.
And I think that could work. I think we would need to look at the code to see what kind of amendment would be necessary to apply the PUD to Lake Drive.
Did I, did I get that direction right? Okay.
Yeah, I think that can work just fine, but I think it will take another code amendment. And I'm counting about four, four and running. But that, that should not be that difficult.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that covers my report.
That's it?
We covered a lot of ground in the workshop.
Yes. Anything else from anyone?
I have a question. That retired truck that was going to go for bid, is that back up, or is that down, or what is it?
You know, we, we got a motion to change the bid amount to $750 as the minimum, but we didn't establish a date for the bidding period to end, or a date to open the bids.
So I haven't put it on Facebook Marketplace or anything like that to advertise, so.
We'll do it now.
I guess.
How long do you usually put them on for?
Last time wasn't, it was maybe six weeks?
It was, it was at least, it was at least two or three weeks. I don't, I don't remember.
I don't think it was six, but.
Okay.
My opinion, you should put on for a week. Anything longer than that is just wasting time.
You are the expert.
No, that's, that's, people get tired of looking at the same thing over and over again.
So do we need a motion, or just direction?
You need a, we, we were looking for a motion, so we knew what day you were going to open the bids, because that's what we do. In the ad, we say that you're going to open the bids, you know what I mean, at a council meetings, or we're basically putting them on notice that that's the night we're going to open them. So whatever date you think is appropriate, which is, so you have July 10th, July 24th, are the two meetings in July.
Can we shoot for the 10th and just be done with it? Does that give you enough time?
What date does anyone want?
I don't know that the deadline, because next week is a holiday. The deadline is the 28th for me. And then it would be in the holiday. It would, that's where, be the Forest Lake times. If you think that's enough time, we'll close the bids then on July 9th.
End of workday?
End of workday, 4 o'clock, yes.
Nice.
So who wants to make the motion?
Put Chuck up for bid, and was the date on until July 9th? Was the beginning date, today, tomorrow?
So the close, the, the close for bids will be July 9th, and bids to be opened, the city council meeting on July 10th.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And if you look at the announcements, the next city council workshop will be the budget workshop, 7/24. Planning commission, the next one is on 7/17. Calendar's on the back, so we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So.